Granquist.
Here.
Langy.
Here.
Merrill.
Here.
Weevilhouse.
Here.
Murin.
Here.
Jackson.
Here.
Clausen.
Here.
File.
Okay, with that, I would look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
Second.
Motion and second. If no discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
I would then look for a motion to approve the full agenda.
So move, your honor.
Second.
Motion and second. If no discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Okay, that moves us to item number twenty on the council agenda under special presentations. A proclamation for February two thousand twenty as Joy of Reading Month. Proclamation reads, whereas reading is a skill that only gets better with practice and is essential to a child's success in school, and there's more to reading than homework and class assignments, and there are an endless number of fun and interesting books out there waiting to be discovered, and older students can use their influence to encourage younger children to read more. In Norfolk's joy, junior optimist Octagon International members believe they can make a difference by encouraging their peers and younger students to read more books and thus improve their reading skills. And the city of Norfolk values its young service leaders and their efforts to make a difference in our community by mentoring younger readers. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Josh Moaning, Mayor of the City of Norfolk, do hereby proclaim the month of February two thousand twenty as Joy of Reading Month in the city of Norfolk and encourage all citizens to take due note of the observance. Is there someone here this evening to receive the proclamation? Hi guys. How we doing? Good. Can you tell us who you are and what school you go to?
I'm, I'm from New York City.
I'm from Chicago.
I'm from New York.
I'm from Oregon.
I'm from Kansas City.
Okay, very good. Thank you for being here. Can you tell us what you do in the joy club? Who wants to volunteer?
Uh, every month, at least every month, we go away with the, how? The special Olympics. Um, we do a bunch of volunteering around town and help out with different things depending on what's going on.
Very good. And you do that once a month?
We do that once a month, but then we do a bunch of other things just whenever.
Okay, very good. And how long have you been involved?
I've been involved for, um, just this year.
Just this year.
I've been involved for the following week. Just this year. Just this year.
And is part of what you do also reading books to younger kids?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Alright, very good. Well, can we get a picture of the proclamation? Yeah? I think Mr. Clausen's here. Here, what's that? Right side up? There we go. That's important. Very good. Thank you guys. Okay, item number twenty-one on our regular agenda. I would look for a motion to consider approval of an easement agreement between Granville Custom Homes Incorporated, a Nebraska corporation in the city of Norfolk for a utility easement to serve Blackberry Heights Second Edition.
I'll make the motion.
Second, your honor.
Motion and second. And Steve Ramis, our public works director, can you give us some background on this, please?
Mayor and council, in this evening's council agenda, under the consent items, you have approved the final plat subdivision agreement, post-construction stormwater agreement for a project that we've been working with the developers on now for a while, Blackberry Heights Second Edition. Uh, this is gonna plat, I don't have the exact number of lots, but this is gonna plat, but somewhere up in the twelve, fifteen lots if I recall correctly. Um, it doesn't get all the way to Blackberry Drive though as a part of Phase One. It's one, one lot short. And in order to get the water main looped in and get the sanitary sewer connected into existing sewer, uh, there's a purpose, a need for an easement around, um, what is Lot Five or, uh, in Block One? Lot One, Block One, um, so that we can make those connections. And, uh, it is a, part of it is it's a twelve inch water main that we're putting in up there. And so we're just a little bit concerned that, uh, with water quality in that large of a main with so few residents connected to it. So a desire to connect that and loop that and then also, uh, again, it would be required to get the sewer to, to connect into the existing sewer system. So, this easement would allow that project to move forward and start installation of those utilities.
Okay. Hey Steve, any questions? Or discussion, council? Hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Okay. Item number twenty-two, I would entertain a motion to consider ordinance number fifty-six forty-six amending section three dash five of the city code to allow the sale of alcoholic liquor on any day from six AM until two AM the following day.
Your honor, I'd move for consideration of ordinance number five-six-four-six.
Motion and second. And Andy Colvin, our city administrator, could you give us some background on this matter, please?
Sure. Uh, thank you, Mayor Council. Uh, this ordinance, I guess I'll give a little bit of a background as to where this ordinance came from. We were asked, I think due to some inquiries that Mayor Moaning received from some constituents and, and citizens in the community to explore, uh, having alcohol sales both on and off the premises here in Norfolk permitted until two AM from the current one AM. So right now, whether you're purchasing alcohol to take off the premises or you're, you're drinking at a, consuming alcohol at a restaurant or bar, you cannot go till past one AM. So there was some concerns about that, that maybe we weren't, um, you know, it was a little bit more restrictive. Some, a lot of other communities do go till two AM. Uh, so really, as we looked into it, communities across Nebraska, there's several that do one AM, there's several that do, do two AM. So I think really what we wanted to do is try to get something that worked best for Norfolk. Um, so the first step we took was to, uh, have a, a special subcommittee meeting and staff sent letters to all of the alcohol licensed owners in Norfolk. Uh, and they were invited to the subcommittee meeting, which was held in the evening, uh, in December. And so, uh, the elected officials wanted to hear from, uh, license holders on, on that change. So we presented the change about the possibility of going to two AM, got feedback. Um, most of it, I think based on what the feedback we heard was, yes, it works. Or, um, you know, I think there might have been some that maybe is just indifferent to it, you know, fine if you do, fine if you don't. Uh, again, it doesn't require alcohol sales till two AM. Um, our establishments can sell alcohol for, till whenever time they'd like to before, before two AM. So this certainly doesn't make them do anything different. But it's again, some, it's a, it could be a significant change from the way business is usually done now. So, uh, the council would did want to hear from, uh, from license holders to get their feedback and input. So we did that and based on the direction we did get from the council from that meeting, uh, we did prepare this ordinance you have before you today. And what it does is it simplifies, uh, the sale of alcohol on any day, uh, on and off the premises, uh, until two AM, from six AM to two AM. So it's a very simple change. As you can see in the draft ordinance, it basically just crosses out between Sunday and Monday and then it makes it until on any day of the week, till two AM. So I guess with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions on the technicalities of this. But essentially that's the background of where this ordinance change came from.
Okay, thank you, Andy. Any questions?
What communities, Andy? Did you survey?
I knew you were gonna ask me that and I'm trying to think. Dani might also recall some of the communities that go to two AM if she would touch on that.
Yeah, we, we do have a comprehensive list, but off the top of my head, I mean, South Sioux City is one, Wayne is one, in terms of proximity as well as Madison. Those are three. Um, as, as far as, I know there's a number of larger cities, but those are the, you know, three close ones that come to mind immediately.
Yeah, I, I would add just as, some background on this. I think it was, it was, it's been some years ago that the state, um, allowed for this local policy change and since then you've had Lincoln in Omaha, and some of the other larger communities, but area communities like Madison and Wayne and South Sioux, Osmond. I think there's a few smaller towns too that have changed to two. So it was in, you know, the last six to eight months that I think myself and other elected officials started to get some questions on this and, um, uh, seeking an exploration of this in, in Norfolk. So that led to the process of seeking input from bar and restaurant owners. We also included in that notification downtown residents, I believe, and people living in a high concentration of, of bars and restaurants or close to them. And we had that meeting, uh, about a month and a half ago. And for public record, I, I can just relay some of the things that were talked about. Most, if not all of the, uh, business owners, their voiced support or indifference regarding the change, but some of the reasoning, reasons that I noted for it were public safety, since Madison and Wayne are communities that are close to us. We anecdotally hear of stories of people leaving Norfolk establishments to get to, uh, places in these communities to make last call, which is not an ideal situation and not something that we want to see in terms of, um, those cars being on the highways. Another reason that was noted was business choice. Again, nobody under this change would have to be open till two AM. You can close whenever you want. Uh, this gives businesses here though an option to do that if they decide that it makes sense for their, their business, since it is allowable under state law now. Another, uh, reason that was given was accommodation of, uh, shift workers. People who, who shift might end at eleven and seek to get a few drinks after work. Was another reason given. And another that I noted was special events. So if you have late sporting events or, uh, community events like Oktoberfest or other festivals that, um, may get over at later hours and give people a little bit more time to go out. So I think that encapsulates a lot of the discussion that we had at that, uh, input session. And, um, I guess would welcome, uh, and open the floor to any other discussion if anyone on council or in the audience wishes to.
Yeah, I agree with the mayor on the safety aspects. I get that. We wouldn't want people to do that. Is there, with the communities that have done it in your research, have they had any public safety issues with that extra hour or anything like that? Has there been, you know, where they've had more problems, not had more problems, you know, something like that?
Yeah, in that level of research and in talking with all the, the public safety folks, um, we didn't specifically visit with all of them about a, a change 'cause different communities have had it in place at, at different time periods. Um, but I will tell you, you know, we did early on have conversations as staff with our, with our police department to get their thoughts on that. And I guess, you know, Chief, uh, Chief Miller's here and Shane Widener's here as well to, to offer their, their opinions on that as well. But it was really kind of a, one AM or two AM really isn't gonna change a whole lot from a public safety standpoint, uh, from, from what I remember, but of course Chief Miller, if he has anything to add to that or if he'd like to hear from, you know, he is here and he'd be happy to offer any input.
I just meant in the other communities, if they themselves have ever had any issues.
I guess we have not, we didn't speak specifically with the police departments of the communities.
Alright, okay, thank you. And I'm, I'm assuming since we're not hearing from either of these gentlemen that they don't have an opinion, that it would be detrimental to, to their being able to provide that public safety or detrimental to the, to the police division.
Shane Widener, Director of Public Safety. We, we did speak as a staff, fire and police and, um, in general, we didn't have major issues with it. We kind of just remained neutral on the whole topic. Um, you know, of course we're about public safety and people making good decisions when they're out and about enjoying the events in a community, no matter what time of day it is. But that's our stance on it. Uh, we did do some, um, checking with some larger towns, um, Omaha in particular and, um, on the fire side Scott did, Chief Cordis did and pretty, pretty benign really on the change. So didn't see any major, anything identifiable like this caused this to happen. So, so we just, that's our feedback. Thank you.
Thank you, Shane.
Alright, thanks.
Any other discussion? Or questions, council? Okay. Hearing none. Uh, short title, please.
An ordinance of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska to amend section three dash five of the official city code to allow the sale of alcoholic liquor on any day from six o'clock AM until two o'clock AM the following day to provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect and to provide for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay. With that, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance fifty-six forty-six carries on first reading.
Okay. Item number twenty-three. Look for motion to consider approval of amendment number one to the engineering services contract with Chimmer Associates Incorporated for the Benjamin Avenue Thirteenth Street to First Street project resulting in an increase of thirty thousand, three hundred and thirteen dollars and fifty-seven cents.
Your honor, I'd move consideration of amendment number one.
Second. Motion and second. And Steve, could you give us some background on this, please?
Mayor and council members, during the design development to date on Benjamin Avenue, there's been a lot of focus on traffic, um, on that corridor. One of the more significant areas of interest is at the middle school and, uh, the, the routing of, of traffic into there for, for drop off in the mornings and then subsequently pickup of the, the students later in the afternoon. I would say there's been a significant effort by the design team and city staff and, and our stakeholder group, which does include, um, representation from the school district, in developing a reconstruction concept or design concept that streamlines the traffic flow, uh, in and out of, of that middle school area. Primarily traffic enters on the west side of the middle school and then the traffic separates into two different drop offs for the different grades that are, that attend there. After presenting the, the design concept, um, to, to staff and, and members of council, there was again, additional conversation about the development of, of the, uh, design alternative that, that's on the table. And in, in conversation with staff and council and school district members, as well as the stakeholders group, we felt it was necessary to, to develop a traffic simulation model that would support the design decisions that have been made by the design team, uh, city staff and, and the stakeholders in developing that, that design. What's before you is a contract amendment for Chimmer that would do some additional traffic counts, uh, to, to look at how that traffic separates once it enters the middle school site. Develop a, a simulation model, which is a video model of how that traffic is moving off of Benjamin Avenue and, and into the middle school. Present that traffic simulation as well as the overall design then to, um, a public open house that would be conducted at the middle school as well as a, a conversation back with the stakeholders group. It does add a couple meetings to the scope of service. I do think there is an opportunity if we can stack these meetings on top of other meetings that will be taking place with the con, um, with, on that project, I guess, with, with the designer. There is a potential that we could lower this, maybe by, up to, I'd say five thousand dollars would be the maximum. I could see us getting this, getting this down, but, um, so that would, again, what, what you have here, thirty thousand, three hundred and thirteen dollars and fifty-seven cents in a contract amendment to Chimmer that I would describe as being for the traffic simulation modeling and presentation of that back to stakeholders in the community. Steve, it, it appears to me that JEO's carrying all the water on this particular amendment. They're going to be the ones doing the simulation and Chimmer's just sitting back there and when they're all done, they're gonna say, cut me a check for eight thousand dollars. You are correct, councilman, that, that JEO is our, our traffic expert on the project. The simulation itself, the modeling is about a hundred and ten hours. That hundred and ten hours is primarily between two individuals there at JEO. And so that is a, a significant portion of, of the project and what we're trying to develop here. In addition to that, there's about eighty-four hours between JEO and Chimmer uh, in terms of meeting attendance for the stakeholders meeting, the public meeting. And some of that certainly includes the generation of, of handouts and information that would be distributed at those meetings as well as then summarizing that and providing that back to us in some kind of a, a summary or report form. So it's not, you know, it's a, it's a, a holistic thing in terms of developing the model and returning the results back to us that would include public comment. So if one were to just go out into the open market and say we'd like to have a traffic simulation for this particular area, would you anticipate that being, uh, twenty thousand dollars plus? If we were, if, if we were starting from scratch? Yeah, I think the fifteen or sixteen thousand that's here for, specifically for the traffic simulation is, is pretty, pretty accurate in terms of developing that simulation model, breaking down the flow of traffic between eastbound, westbound traffic into the site and then separating that between the two grade groups that are there. I, I think that's a reasonable amount. I, I don't disagree that the, the fee that's proposed for, for the meeting attendance, project management, um, seems high. Uh, I, I think it, I think it is high in terms of the, the work that we need to, to complete here. I, I would propose that, I don't exactly know how this thing's gonna come together in terms of timing and where the meetings that we can stack on top of, of these meetings, how those meetings may occur. If it's desirous that we make those happen, uh, so we can take advantage of that and reduce the number of meetings and the calls that we're making into the contractor, that, that may have some impact of extending the design timeframe a month or so, uh, just to make all that happen. And so I think we structured this to move it through as quickly as we could and not necessarily take advantage of some of those other meetings, just in terms of where we are from a time, time perspective on the project and the design. Again, I, I think if we don't need to do that, if we can stack it, I think there's some savings here.
Is there some opportunity for partnership with the school district on this since this particular modeling serves to, um, maximize public safety surrounding, in and surrounding that property? Or have we had those discussions? Maybe that's an easier question.
We've not had that discussion. I'd say there probably is some opportunity, at least to have the discussion and see if, see if we can get some assistance there. Would it seem reasonable then to have that discussion with, uh, JEO and Chimmer prior to, uh, looking at this any further? Because it would appear to me that, that there's some savings to be had here. And rather than passing this tonight for thirty thousand dollars, we could pass it some other night for twenty. I'm, I think that's a good conversation to have, councilman. And I think what I would ask then is a modification of the amendment to go ahead and pass the fifteen thousand, seven hundred for modeling so we could at least start that process and get that under contract and then we can come back and, and look at how we want to amend that for meetings as we, after we have these conversations. Alright, very good. Steve, this traffic modeling that we have to do, I mean, we originally approved this agreement a little over a year ago. The traffic modeling that came up as a result of what during this last year? It's really, it's, it's, it's a conversation about how traffic flows. Middle schools are tough. It doesn't, whether you're in Norfolk, Columbus, Grand Island, traffic in and out of middle schools is tough. We tend to put those schools in, in place without really thinking through a full traffic model and how that's gonna flow. They've certainly done modifications to the site over the last few years to try and improve that and I think there has been some improvement. But getting, because of the, there's some interaction there with the YMCA and the entrances and, and exits from the YMCA, there's some, um, controlled, controlled access or directional access that's incorporated as a part of this, uh, this flow. I, I think that, um, I think there's a little bit of risk for us to move forward without properly capturing feedback from the parent groups and from maybe some of the middle school staff on this specifically. You know, the, the public meetings that we generally put together aren't focused on a, on a large group like that. So would, were not included as part of the traffic, the traffic study that was done? Where we're, that is primarily just doing traffic counts at your intersections and major movements. And that was in their original agreement? Correct. We did, this is more in-depth, they're drilling down a little bit further than based on everything that's happened in the last year. Yeah, we, we think it's, we think it is prudent that we gather specific information specifically from the school, the teachers, the parents that are there on a daily basis and using that, and, and make sure that we haven't missed anything in terms of this, this traffic movement and this design. Okay. Thank you.
Well, I think a lot of this too was discussed at our work session and I, I believe you, you were out. Were you at that one? So, and yeah, I knew that it was gonna be some additional monies that way. I guess, um, and, and they work really good for, for explaining, uh, traffic flows and that to the layperson that way. Um, I, I do remember when we did Benjamin Avenue up on, when Benjamin Avenue came across on Thirteenth Street, there was a traffic flow study that, um, actually had the model done on up and that. I guess, um, the only thing that I would suggest, uh, 'cause I, you know, yeah, it's, it's some money, but it's also gonna buy, get, create a tremendous amount of buy-in, I believe, for what they're presenting, which the common layperson doesn't really understand that. I don't know if it's a possibility of, of providing for those as we go forward in future projects that way as having, you know, it's, it's basically a unit cost that way. If, if that's not a unit cost that we could have hanging out there that we would be able to decide at some point in time we wanna, to incorporate or not incorporate it. Whereas now it's, it's pretty much a, well, we're this far along and we want to get this done. Here's, here's what you have. And it creates a little bit of concern that, that, um, we're biting off some money that, that probably would be of a lesser and more competitive amount if it had occurred earlier that way. So, but, um, I think that it's really the only way that the general public's gonna understand the traffic flow over there. I, I've seen what they have going on and I believe it will work very good, but there's the people that don't understand that, that you need that buy-in. I mean, there's, there's a lot of students, well, they already left. Well, they're still here, so some of them, but, that are gonna be impacted by that, so.
I would, uh, I agree with Councilman Langy on the, it's important to have buy-in. I, I do also wonder why, uh, given the total amount of engineering cost in this project, that, that we're looking at this now as opposed to already having.
already having that put in there. I mean, they know the why is there, they, they know the middle school is there and so seems like we're coming around the backside of the barn but that's, you know, that's all water under the bridge at this point. But I do have a real problem with the, with the amounts over that 15,700. And so I think possibly an amendment to this is in order, certainly.
Rob, I would think hopefully with, since we approved a $950,000 contact, contract with them essentially, that they'd be able to work on those numbers a little bit for us.
I think it was more like 9, 980?
947 and then it's 977 and then it's 30,000.
That was my question on why we were having this extra. I was trying to get that.
Again, though, the scope didn't have, the scope did not have a traffic study required of it or model.
So we're talking about a $15,000 swing here.
Yeah, but it's, it's the same, yeah, that difference in there, yeah. But it's the same as if I go to a local use or local car dealer and say, well, I want this and then when I show up and want to pick it on up, I say, well, how come don't I have automatic backing up and all this stuff? So, you know, those are, those are just things I think we need to watch for as we go forward. I think there, I would like to see some negotiation on this to a certain extent that way.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
So I've heard discussion about a potential amendment for the underlying costs associated just with the modeling and I think I heard Steve say that it's important to keep the process moving so we don't encounter any unnecessary delays. So to that effect, do I hear a motion being made to amend amendment number one?
I will see how far Dan lets me get down the line on this thing without messing up. I would offer an amendment to oops, lost my place here. I believe that is ordinance number 23. Number 23, yes, on the motion number 23. To replace the $30,313.57 figure with $15,700 and have further discussion on the difference. I'll second that.
Okay, an amendment proposed to amendment number one to change the increase to, from $30,313.57 to $15,000.
$700.
$700, okay. Motion in second. To that effect, any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative.
Alright, with that, we move to item number 24. Entertate a motion to consider ordinance number 5647 to amend section 2-21.1 of the code to reorganize city council subcommittees.
Your Honor, I'd offer for consideration ordinance number 5647.
Second. Motion in second. And Andy, could you give us some background on this please?
Sure, thank you Mayor. This item is a housekeeping item that has been on one of my to-do lists. You know, I guess for background, the subcommittee process is something that, you know, maybe a lot of people don't realize happens behind the scenes. It's an opportunity for staff to bring some policy ideas, get feedback from elected officials, look at changes, look at some different issues that might come along with certain policy changes. And it gives staff direction before we bring something to the full council for consideration and provide those valuable recommendations that, that we need to make sure we're going in the right direction. So what we have here is a relatively simple change but it is important in the sense that it's going to give staff, I think, a better idea of where we bring and to whom we bring certain issues with as far as what committee sees what. We've had some restructuring. We have a Department of Parks and Recreation right now. That's been taken out of the Public Works Department and it's its own department between planning and development and building codes. We've combined those departments here over the last couple of years. So this goes along with that to try to really focus in on what we want our subcommittees to focus on and then staff can therefore know where, where we bring the particular topics to. So I'll just review some of those subcommittees now of what's been proposed. And then I'd be happy to answer any questions. The first committee is the Public Services Traffic and Infrastructure Committee. That's going to handle, just as it says, anything to do with transportation, anything to do with, with water, sewer, stormwater, solid waste, traffic, parking. All those items would, would come to that subcommittee. Public health and safety and then emergency services, again, just as that one says, police, fire. We also did include into this one flood control to make sure that all those operations are kind of tied into to one function of that subcommittee. And community and economic development, right now, those are two separate committees. There's a community development committee and then there's an economic development subcommittee as well. And so we're combining those two because essentially that's what we are practicing right now with our current economic development subcommittee is really handling both of those anyways. So in that sense, we're putting into place what we already do is combining those two together. And then culture and recreation, just as that would indicate, that's going to be your Parks and Recreation, library. Any, any kind of that, that cultural enrichment and physical activity that, that we'd see happen here in recreation in Norfolk would go to that subcommittee. And then the last one, that's, this one's a little bit different but it is one that I've had experience with in my past career is the Policies and Procedures Committee. That's a general, kind of a city affairs subcommittee. Insurance, any employee benefits, staffing, just items or any other ordinance changes, legal issues, legal questions, things like that. Just more administrative issues would go to that particular subcommittee. I can't foresee that one meeting all that often but there, there may be times where that would be necessary and I think very valuable in my opinion to have that because certain items are not going to really be able to fall into one of these other, other ones. So again, I'd be happy to take any, any questions from the council on any of these. And at the next meeting, we would bring the actual assignment of the members to those subcommittees. So once this is approved tonight, at our next meeting in February, we'll bring those actual changes to assign the member, the individual council members. And again, the mayor does serve on all the subcommittees and then the council president is in charge of assigning members to serve on those subcommittees. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you Andy. Any questions? I think the restructuring makes sense. I think it's based on, you know, changing evolving policy demands on the council and none of this is radically changed but I think the organization is consistent with some of the groupings, policy groupings that we're, we're experiencing anyway. So, and the process, as you stated, would remain the same. The city council president designates the specific members for each sub, council subcommittee, correct?
Correct. The only thing we're changing here is really the names of the subcommittees to be more accurate as to what we actually do currently, in my opinion.
Okay. Alright. Any other discussion, council? If none, short title please, Brianna.
An ordinance of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska to amend section 2-21.1 of the official city code to reorganize city council subcommittees to provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect and to provide for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5647 carries on first reading.
Your Honor, I'd move we suspend the rules. Not a controversial ordinance. Pass on second and third.
Second. Okay, motion in second to suspend the rules and approve on second and third readings. No further discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5647 carries on second and third.
Okay, with that, that concludes this meeting of the Norfolk City Council. We are adjourned.